Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 11 regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. We have a very special meeting with some special guests here tonight, but first, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are emergency exits on either side in the back and either side up front. Mr. Gavin, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Barry. I know we are joined here by a large crowd this evening to honor so many adults that have spent their time working here in Rockville Center School District, but first, we want to kick it off to congratulate several of our spring athletes this year. Our Cyclones continue to dominate on the athletic stage, and I want to just point out that we have one of our two all-state competitors at track and field here with us today. Victoria Daniel, who's a junior, ran 100-yard dash in one of the fastest times in Southside School history and competed at the state level. And John Frazier, who pretty much is in this auditorium as much as I am because he's constantly competing at the state level in the triple jump. He is an amazing young man. John, thank you for all the work that you have done this year. You may have also heard that, you know, the lacrosse team won something. I don't know if anyone went to the game, but we invited our lacrosse team here as well, but it is their county dinner tonight, so that's where they are. And I can tell you right now, I saw the list of awards. Southside continues to dominate all across the county. So we wish... We wish our boys, our board's lacrosse team, congratulations on a phenomenal season. If you have not yet seen some of the games, each and every time during the playoff run, I thought one game was better than the next. And each and every time, and I'm not someone who can really jump like John Frazier, but when we scored the goal with less than a second left to tie it and send it into overtime, I'm pretty sure I got air, which is in and of itself an accomplishment. But again, thank you so much to all the support that we've had from Cyclone Nation all the way through. So we just wanted to recognize our athletes, and John, if you'd like to come up, we have a step and repeat to take a picture in front of us. So thank you.
We're going to go a little bit out of order this evening. I'm going to ask the board for a motion to approve the Personnel Actions Report.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gavin, I'll turn it over to you.
So for all of you in the audience up for tenure, congratulations, you just got it. You do have to show up in September. That's like a key piece. You do have to show up in September. But before we talk about our newly-tenured teachers, I would like to kick it to my colleague, Mr. John Murphy, to run the show and be our emcee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Is this my phone?
Ms. Kelly.
Take that as a note?
How about that? All righty then. I think we're doing well. So congratulations to the tenured people. As a staff member who's been on probation for 15 years, my, no joke, my heart goes out to you and congratulations, no sarcasm. But today, we're here to recognize a series of employees that are part of the continuum, that they're not bookends, but they're part of a legacy that is Rockville Center Schools. Some can't be with us tonight, some are planning the next stage, and some, we're here to thank for being part of the continuum. It's all about learning, and it's all about the relationships and putting our common goal, which is kids first, and this is what happens. So the first group I'd like to recognize could not be here with us tonight, but these are retirees who, from September until now, have either turned to their resignation or have moved on to their next phase. So I'll go through them as a group, and then we can give them a collective yawn and wish them well. We'll start with kindness. And Mary Carroll, who worked for 15 years at the middle school, retired this year. She was a teaching assistant, she was a classroom helper, but above all things, she was kind. And there's not a single person on this planet who you could meet who has ever worked with Mary Carroll who has a negative thing to say. So nothing but good things to Mary Carroll. We also have at the high school Vinny Artuso, who not only had his own send-off, but much to the neighbor's chagrin, had his own honk-out on his last day because everyone found out. So you had a half an hour of, well, Shepherd Street used to be quiet, but Vinny was a presence for six years or longer at the high school. Everyone knew him. He was a calm presence and someone that you could deeply rely on. So Vinny retired in December, and we wish him, we wish him well. From Riverside, my only question to Juan Aguirre, other than where are you now, is do you ever have a bad day? No matter where I was in that building, the guy was smiling, no matter what. I mean, sure, he did his job impeccably well, but that presence, that's contagious. I mean, maybe if I worked in Riverside, I'd be happy all the time, too. I don't know. But it's just, it's just coming to work every day with that type of composure is a gift. And I'm sure he's going to carry that into, into his next phase. There are two people who probably never worked together, but when I think of them, I think of them almost as like a yin and yang, one at Riverside and one at the high school. Sue DeVerna was the anchor at our attendance office and was one of those people that things went smoothly and to the letter accurately, and you, no one ever questioned why, you know? And it was because Sue was the rock in the attendance office, irrespective, and stuff happened of what happened, she was ready and prepared and always had an answer in some of the most challenging situations with parents and kids. So congratulations, and I wish you well. And Diana Forman, who I knew under various capacities, who ended her career after 27 years here at Riverside, was one of these magic people who always knew where something was. You know, whether it was an order or a PO or a phone number, somehow, in her rolodex of a mind, she knew where everything was. But she's, she's going to move on at the end of this month, 27 years, well, seems like yesterday. Congratulations to Diana Forman. So one more, and this is someone who we work with more as central administration, but also I'd worked in the buildings for 25 years. Carol Ann Walter was last in the technology department, but had been through several schools. And anyone who can put up with state reporting on a yearly basis and maintain your sanity as well as your disposition deserves retirement. So to all of those who couldn't make it here, congratulations.
I always prided myself on being a pretty decent student. My claim to failure is that Megan Healy has sat with me for 15 years at Girls Across, trying to teach me the rules of the game. And I'm still not getting it. I just, I'm like, what? They can't walk in front of each other? You know, as I'm watching a decapitation, I just, I don't understand. But she tried and she never, ever stopped trying. And, and that's Meg though, that's Megan Healy, just that, that source of positivity. Like, I didn't mind her dancing at all the games, I just got tired looking at her. I'm like, you're making us all look bad, dude. It's, it's, everything is a party. Everything was a celebration. You know, watching the kids get their sneakers after their 26-milers, right? Going to championship games, always offering a source. And in those difficult conversations, when you're at a faculty meeting, and you know this is not going well, and you have a difficult conversation, there's always that one or two people who you know you can make eye contact with. And you can get a feel that, yeah, this is, or it's okay, it'll be fine. And Megan was one of those sets of eyes that I always looked to in the middle of that discomfort. She's not really leaving, she's just pretending, but let's pretend she's retiring, and congratulations, Meg. Did you know that Caroline Klein and I started in the district on the exact same day? Like, why would you care? Right? I don't even think Caroline knew that, but we did. She went, she went grade two and four, I went to the high school and... Little bit, little bit. And in between, I don't know what happened, but the number of lives that she's touched of those young kids that we have been the beneficiaries of, especially with reading and poetry. We all have our passions and we all will teach with a capital T. We teach the kids, the subject matter comes along. But as a true poet and artist, she'll be remembered fondly for her, for being a wordsmith and her choice of words, both with her colleagues and with the kids. And we wish you really, really well. Congratulations, Caroline. And I was gonna say, these are in no particular order, but we're like, oh, look at this, Kathy put them in alphabetical. Okay, so, nice of me to notice, keen, keenly aware of my situation. There's a number of different ways that we're measuring time, right? Because we're going through people's careers. And we can measure it in years, or, you know, periods, quarters, semesters. But there are some people who, who readjust time in your head. Like, I can chronicle my Southside time by what the show was. I'd say, yeah, that's Midsummer Night year. And, or I know the kid based on, yeah, funny thing happened on the way to the Forum, I remember that. Or that was cabaret the second time, when they wore clothes, I remember. Sorry. But, but you do, and, and it's not just because of the shows, it's because they were memorable. And because of the painstaking detail and genius that went into them, that it redefined the standard for what theater was. I mean, I was going to other districts and I knew they were stealing from what we just did the last year. It happened all the time. But that's not the defining moment for Pam. The defining moment for Pam is that we both went to the same student-teacher training program in Almhurst, no, I'm kidding. No one else knew that either. We both went to Louis Armstrong, where we whet our teeth, teaching in 1840. But Pam's gift, as well as just being the theater, is being the professional presence and having the standard, and holding some of our feet to the fire to walk into our areas of greatest discomfort when we least wanted to. As well as the fact that her mother was my mentor when I was early teaching here, so it's all her fault. But I can't believe she's leaving, but Pamela Seidman, congratulations and best of luck. Madam President, I think I am turning it over to you.
Yes, thank you. First, on behalf of the, the board, we congratulate all of our retirees. We thank you for your many years of service to our district, and most importantly, to our children. At this time, I am going to ask the board, there's this group on this list that, as a board, we've worked closely with over the years, and I am going to ask the board at this time to each take a turn and honor the last four retirees here this evening. So, I'm gonna kick it over to Mrs. Messier first, please.
The Board of Education would like to recognize and extend our deepest gratitude to William S. Covert Principal, Mr. Darren Raymar, as he steps into a well-deserved retirement. Darren's legacy is one of compassion, collaboration, and most importantly, fun. From birthday bashes, to end of the school year foam parties, to ordering the ice cream truck for the entire school, to his dance numbers at the annual variety show, to fall festivals complete with Darren-shaped cookies and live goldfish prizes, to imagining and bringing Captain Covert to life, to dressing up his elf on the shelf and greeting the students from the school roof, to supporting the PTA Fun Run by offering high-interest prizes, such as Assistant Principal for the Day, water balloon fight with Mr. Raymar, pie Mr. Raymar in the face, slime Mr. Raymar, tape Mr. Raymar to the chair, and shoot Mr. Raymar out of a cannon, the last of which the PTA was unfortunately unable to get approved. Your creativity, enthusiasm, and willingness to always say yes truly knows no bounds. Darren has always treated everyone, students, staff, caregivers, and community members like family. This deeply personal approach has fostered a culture of care and trust. As such, Covert has become a shining example of what a school should be. An inclusive space that is welcoming and joyful, a safe space where all students and staff are seen, heard, valued, and celebrated. A space where caregivers are engaged as valued partners in their children's education. Covert is a place that empowers everyone to reach their full potential. Darren, you have shown us what it means to lead with heart. You will be deeply missed not only by the Covert School community, but also the larger Rockville Center School District community. Thank you for being you, thank you for being extraordinary. We wish you only the best in retirement.
Twenty-three years ago, Elizabeth Pryke started as an Assistant Principal at Southside High School, where she would stay for five years before assuming the role of Principal of the Jenny E. Hewitt Elementary School. She will now retire from that post after 18 years as the school's leader. I think it's fair to say that in these roles, in two of our largest district buildings, Mrs. Pryke has touched the lives of thousands of Rockville Center students. And I'd also venture a guess that she remembers the name of every single one. I remember the first day I met Mrs. Pryke at kindergarten orientation more than 10 years ago. I was floored by you. She was the real-life version of Mary Poppins, a leader with style, grace, and class. She showed amazing kindness to every child, every parent, every staff member. I wondered how she could exert so much energy on a daily basis. But then September came, and every day for the next nine years that followed, she was the same version of the principal I met that very first day. Every day started with Mrs. Pryke outside the front door of Hewitt, greeting every child by name. No matter the heat, the rain, the snow, around the calendar, she was the first person the children were greeted by every day before they entered her building for their daily Hewitt adventure. She is the woman who brought the district tea and sympathy for kindergarten parents. She brought the infamous clapout to RVC. She mentored and supported countless teachers, staff, and administrators, Jim Duffy, in her tenure. She created a warm and nurturing environment that valued its traditions, as well as academic success for our students. She dedicated the time and support to be an amazing PTA partner. She made the largest elementary building in the district maintain a tight-knit culture with her warmth, sincerity, and love. Thank you, Mrs. Pryke. Our district is indebted to you. Thank you on behalf of the board and the countless children and families you have impacted. We love you and we wish you a happy and healthy, well-deserved retirement.
Carol, first, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your 15 years of dedicated service to our district. I first got to know you in the calendar meeting as a PTA president. Little did I know how much beyond that you were responsible for over the 15 years that you've been our district athletic director. That was after your first career in the private sector. You have now spent 25 years plus working with students and advocating for students. And we are so lucky to have had you for the 15 years that we did. And you only had to watch Carol's reaction just now as Mr. Gavin was talking about the athletes who, and their accomplishments this spring, to realize just how much she is proud of them, how much she is invested in them, and what a champion she is for our student athletes and for our students in general. You are a fixture on the sidelines, you are their biggest supporter and loudest cheerleader at every sporting event. It's crazy how many games, honestly, you're able to get to, because that day is a long day. And you're there for them all the time, and, and we really appreciate that. Beyond that, you've been a champion for their, not only their physical well-being, but their mental well-being, and understanding that those two things go very much hand in hand. You've helped shaped years' worth of student athlete leaders through the Athletes Helping Athletes Program. And it's no surprise how many accolades you've received. I did not know until I asked the question, but you've been honored with many accomplishments, most notably New York State Athletic Director of the Year and New York State Amazing Person of the Year. And with your passion and energy, I honestly can't picture you retiring, so I'm just waiting to hear what your next adventure is going to be. But we just want to wish you the best of luck in the future, and thank you for all you've done for the years you've been here. So, congratulations. Dr. Brian Zuhar, if any of us had your talent, we could sing you a song, or dance you a dance, or paint you a portrait, but we are stuck only with words to express our thanks and best wishes to you on your retirement as Director of the Arts from Rockville Center Schools after 23 years. That very word, retirement, suggests that you're not gonna do it anymore, but we all know that the arts are in your blood. So, rather than retirement, I'd like to think of this more as your graduation. You've spent enough time here in the schools, and it's time to use your gifts to make art and inspire others in ways as you move on from us. The environment you've created here for our students to feel supported in their lives in music, arts, and performance is unparalleled. You have created a culture here that will remain. As Louis Armstrong said, "Music is life itself, and what would this world be without good music?" When you, very often in this very auditorium, have introduced us to the good music our children have learned and often perform here, you often kick off the school concerts with your famous line that you don't want to stand between us and the music any longer. But here tonight, we find ourselves wishing, would you stay between us and the music a little bit longer? Congratulations, thank you, and play on.
At this time, we're gonna, once again, congratulate all of the retirees and ask everyone to come up for a one picture together. Okay, Mr. Gavin, we also have another group of individuals that the board took action on tonight. So, before we kick it back to you and Mr. Murphy, on behalf of the Board of Education, just want to take a moment and acknowledge all of the tenured recipients tonight. The board is asked to act on your recommendation, and it's something that we don't take lightly as a board, and we celebrate you and all that you've done up to this point, and we look forward to your continued service to our district. So, Mr. Gavin, you want to kick it over to Mr. Murphy?
As if we haven't gotten enough of Jesus John yet, it's time to go back to John Murphy to talk a little bit about our tenured recipients. For all those in the audience, please know that the honor of getting tenure, or earning tenure, is a really important milestone in the life and trajectory and career of an educator. It means that they have shown dedication to our district. It means they have shown dedication to their colleagues. And most importantly, it means that they have shown dedication to our students. And for us, this is one of the, one of the milestones that you will always remember, because it is the time that says, "We value you for the rest of your career." So, for all of you that are earning tenure here tonight, well done. Jesus John, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So, because this is kind of like a welcome home party for you as tenured, and we're going to have years and years and years to publicly embarrass you, you know, in front of an audience, we're gonna keep this one shorter than usual, and just welcome you to, to the tenured staff as a collective. So, just we'll have the whole party up here in a second. So, congratulations, and this is not in building order, but first, from the high school, Special Education, Taylor Aronakis. In elementary, presently at Hewitt School, Jennifer Bermudez Azaveto. Elementary, currently at Watson School, Laura Guyer. Our music department, Jessica Harmon. Again, from Hewitt Elementary, Cheryl Linsera. District-wide, Jessica Zalnich, speech. And second time around at the middle school for Maria Lasosa, Assistant Principal. Those are our tenured staff. Photo op.
We also have another group to honor this evening, so on behalf of the board, we would like to take a moment to thank all of the mentors as well for your service in helping shape our staff and, and helping instruct them in how to be better instructors. And, Mr. Murphy, you wanna...
So, special thanks to the... Sorry. So, special thanks to the program itself, that Dr. Mori already supervises, and with, in cooperation with the Teachers Association and Class Advisors, Chrissy Seleckia and Dr. Karen John. The mentorship program has been a longstanding tradition whereby the veteran staff is partnered with a new teacher who forms a friendship and a professional relationship, to fill in all those gaps with a professional development, the teacher training, the day-to-day stuff, where's the bathroom? That, that makes, that makes the, the day run smoothly. They serve quietly and, and with very little regard to their own time. So, just as, as a group, I'd like to collectively list their names and thank them for being part of the continuum, because the excellence that you've seen tonight didn't happen by accident, it happened with relationships. So, special thanks to the following who have served as mentors. Taylor Aronakis at the high school, Sylvia Bonanno at the high school of World Languages, Christine Brown, high school English department, Pete English, high school business office, Keith Gamache, high school art office, Tom Hessel, high school science, Anthony Zito, Special Education, Allison Cray, middle school, Jen Dolan, middle school, Stephanie Markwalter, middle school, Anthony Pomponio, middle school, Virginia Southwick, high school, right? I was testing myself, all right. Virginia Southwick, middle school, Nancy Chase, middle school, Lisa Kolich, Covert, Gina Pastiere, Hewitt, Shawn Abramson, Riverside, Chrissy Lyons, Riverside, Patricia Montemorano, Watson. Oh, sure, now. Melissa Rice, Watson, Amy O'Leary, Wilson, and Alexis Weber, district-wide. Congratulations and thank you, mentors. Now I'm done.
Well done, Mr. Murphy. At this time, we're gonna take a short break and enjoy some coffee and cake, cookies, cookies, just kidding, okay? We'll be back in about five to 10 minutes. Congratulations, everybody. Okay, once again, congratulations to all of our retirees and tenure recipients. Mr. Gavin, at this time, we're going to ask you for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As we are in June, it's concert and award ceremony season and graduation season. The final high school concerts were amazing. Thank you to Dr. Zouar and our music staff for their hard work preparing our students for such amazing music. We are steadily in the midst of our award ceremonies. We just concluded the high school awards and scholarships last evening and have our varsity S award ceremony on Thursday. Center Stage was our annual amazing celebration of the Rockville Center community. It was great to be a part of it and it reminds us all of the opportunities we have to support one another and see the unique gifts that every student possesses. Best wishes to all of our students as they begin finals and Regents exams. Congratulations to all of our UPK students who are moving up to the big time in kindergarten next year, to our fifth grade students that are moving up to the middle school, to our eighth grade students moving up here to the high school, and of course, to the class of 2024, which will be, we will celebrate together on Wednesday, June 26 at Hofstra at 5:00 PM. Best wishes to all of our families as they prepare for a relaxing summer, and most importantly, thank you to our administrators and teachers for all of their hard work this year. That is my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. The board echoes congratulations to all of our students and a note of gratitude to all of our staff as well. At this time, we will start our public work session. Mr. Gavin, I believe we have two presentations this evening?
That's correct. We are going to begin with a writing presentation. Dr. Moriarty and her team will be leading us through one, one of the components of our ELA curriculum review. As we've noted, the board has asked for a little bit more detail on what we have done here in terms of writing instruction. So Dr. Moriarty and her team will lead us through that, and then after that, we'll talk about our other board goal, which was math curriculum review. Again, Dr. Moriarty, slightly different team. I don't want to mix them up. We have a writing team and we have a math team. So, Dr. Moriarty, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Gavin, and the larger community, both here and at home. I am pleased to introduce a team of dedicated administrators who have been instrumental in exploring the writing practices we engage in across the district. This talented group of educators collaborated extensively, extended their learning, and worked closely with teachers to analyze our current state and to identify critical areas for our future focus. Please join me in recognizing Dr. Diaz, Mrs. Pascarella, Mrs. Nissler, and Mr. Rosenthal, and appreciating the contributions of this exceptional team this evening.
Good evening, Board of Education, families, educators. As a team, our goal has been to ensure that our students develop strong writing skills, which are essential for their academic success and future. Our preliminary review encompasses an evaluation of our current practices and curriculum while incorporating feedback from educators, teachers, students, and parents to drive our next steps. We have simultaneously worked with teachers to align our work to the science of reading and writing, the next-generation learning standards, and highly effective teaching practices K-12. We are committed to fostering a comprehensive and inclusive writing approach that meets the diverse learning needs of all learners. The work presented this evening builds upon the Board of Education goals that were established last school year focusing on an in-depth review of our ELA curriculum. Our committees are consistently meeting to guarantee there is horizontal and vertical alignment across all schools. This alignment ensures a seamless progression of writing skills from kindergarten through 12th grade. Our efforts ensure that the curriculum is rigorous and offers an appropriate level of cognitive complexity for our learners. Given the extant literature on literacy, there is a limited number of research studies focused specifically on writing. As we reflect on our practices, we draw upon our analysis of the New York State Literacy Breeze. And in short, writing is very complex. And so these documents provide evidence of the cognitive demands writing places on learners, requiring them to engage multiple regions of the brain for executive functioning, text generation, and transcription. As we reflect on our writing practices, our approach to analysis remains consistent with other processes we've previously employed. We examine how the current curriculum integrates reading and writing connections through explicit instruction across various disciplines. Additionally, we strive to ensure that the curriculum provides opportunities for students to practice writing in different genres. This allows us to assess the need for curricular adjustments and to enhance content-based writing instruction. So in the next few slides, we're going to break down the current state and outline some of the action steps that we have implemented this year. Please note that this is an ongoing work in progress, and although the slides, the next few slides are going to be broken down into elementary, middle, and high school, we remain committed to that vertical and horizontal alignment that Dr. Diaz noted. At the elementary level, writing activities are taking place across all grades. We are currently using the Writer's Workshop model, producing on average two to three extended writing pieces each year. Additionally, we utilize time with our stellar teachers, and that is when classroom teachers and stellar teachers get together and collaborate on writing projects such as research assignments. This year, our actions, action steps have focused more on the connections between reading and writing, emphasizing their interconnectedness. We are implementing the Keys to Literacy routines as a crucial part of the planning process, which is essential to that writing process. As a reminder, KTL routines are used currently K through 12, and they help reduce the cognitive load on the brain, allowing students the ability to focus on the complexities within the writing process. We also are in the early stages of utilizing the win period and implementing passion projects, which we plan to extend throughout the district over time. And in grades three to five, we've used our integrated units of inquiry to embed writing tasks that enable our learners to demonstrate their mastery of content through constructed responses and end-of-unit assessments, excuse me. Students will learn to use and make claims, support them with evidence from across all curriculum areas, making learning visible within the context of those inquiry statements. At the middle school level, writing continues, and the NYPD curriculum has emphasized that writing across the disciplines as well. And that occurs through grades six and seven and eight. Students engage in expository, narrative, persuasive, and descriptive writing with a focus on evidence-based writing that supports claims, theses, and/or hypotheses. Some of the action steps taken at the middle school and high school were similar this year. For example, a number of staff, including myself, are being trained in the writing revolution, which is a method of writing instruction that can be applied in any subject area or even any grade level. The writing revolutions focus on embedding writing in content and across content areas, aligns very nicely with the Keys to Literacy in the elementary buildings, and also with the middle years program at the middle school. Another great resource has been Kate Roberts. She's a consultant who's been working with the English teachers across the various grade levels to break down the standards and develop learning progressions. In simple terms, they're working together to identify both skills for development as well as how to utilize strategies to move students to the higher levels of the skill progression. What's particularly great about this is it's not just the teachers reflecting on the student's performance. The progressions are made visible and accessible to the students, so they're able to be reflective about where they're at and what steps they need to take. Moving on to the high school, again, no surprise, writing is embedded throughout the subject areas. Students engage in a variety of writing types that meet New York State standards, so argumentative writing, analytic, creative. And in addition to the state standards, writing is a major point of emphasis in any IB class that our 11th or 12th grade students take. But no matter the grade, there is a strong focus on providing evidence for claims. You'll see this in classroom discussion on any given day, and that's mirrored in the writing. Writing tasks are broken down into discrete parts, and writing is often chunked to make the process manageable for students and just more effective overall. As this implies, there's an emphasis on the process model, where students are introduced to a task, they're shown models that they analyze and understand, and then they go off. They propose a topic, they write a draft, they conference with their teachers as well as their peers, they edit, revise, submit another version. So to accomplish this, considerable time is given to writing in class, so that students are not just working on it at home, and this allows for that supportive component of workshopping and peer editing. I should mention also that rubrics are regularly used. These help to set the expectations for students as well as help the teachers evaluate the work and provide targeted feedback.
Good evening. We've done a number of things this year at the high school in terms of action steps, including many ongoing conversations and discussions with administrators and facilitators to identify and talk about our strengths and our needs. The high school administration also participated in several reading and writing workshops. The writing workshops were absolutely fascinating in that we weren't just with secondary staff members. We were with elementary reading specialists, and that's something that I've never done before. So one of the things that we were talking about, particularly Liz and I, were that we had the opportunity to work with elementary school teachers and, you know, get informed on what they're doing day-to-day in terms of the writing process and the building blocks, which then helps us to work on the progressions as students come to us at the high school level. We also worked on the writing revolution. We're learning more about that together. We've conducted professional development on AI, which in today's world, if you mention writing in any school environment, AI is going to be mentioned. And we discussed it and had professional development, looking at it as a resource for our students and staff. for our students and staff. We've also conducted ongoing curriculum meetings with Dr. Moriarty at the high school, with our administrative team, and that was about twice a month, including one just today. So, we've done a number of things, and we certainly look forward to moving forward into next year with the writing process. And I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for supporting the endeavor, Superintendent Gavin as well, and a big shout-out and a big thank you to Dr. Moriarty and, I'm sorry, Dr. Diaz, for all the work that they put in and the effort, and for really moving forward with the initiative.
So, you heard a lot this evening, right? Drawing from our preliminary examination of writing in RVC and further expanding upon existing writing processes, several notable strengths emerge across the district. One prominent aspect is ample opportunities provided to students for crafting extended pieces throughout the academic year. Students engage in iterative processes where they're able to draft, revise, edit, and reflect, thereby honing their writing skills. Additionally, it is evident that our students demonstrate proficiency in locating and incorporating evidence to substantiate their arguments within their written work. Our review also revealed opportunities for growth. First, to ensure coherence and alignment, fostering increased collaboration among departments and grade levels is essential. Furthermore, there is also an opportunity for enhanced integration between reading and writing, an area we believe the IB and NYPD support and address. Expanding avenues for students to engage with diverse genres and disciplines is imperative. Recognizing that effective writing necessitates, I'm sorry, necessitates practices, that we advocate for all learners to develop foundational writing skills progressively, from the individual words to sentences, and from single paragraphs to multiple paragraphs. Additionally, there is an opportunity for greater alignment across grade levels, particularly in focusing on specific writing tasks from K through 12th grade. As our work continues next year focused on writing practices, we anticipate presenting the Board of Education with a comprehensive analysis of our writing review and the professional learning initiatives we hope to engage in with the Writing Revolution. And we are very eager to share our work around writing and continue to support the and enhance the student outcomes here in Rockville Center Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'll see if the board has any comments or questions.
I'll go. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comment that writing is very complex, for sure. And two things that I had questions about, is there, within all of the writing tasks that students are undertaking, where is the room for student choice, right? Are these, are the topics that are typically assigned, or are there places where students can make decisions about evidence and a thesis that they are particularly interested in pursuing?
I'd say more often than not, the prompts and the questioning and the opportunities are open-ended, particularly at the high school. That's really all I could speak to. But student choice is really treated as essential, from looking at something, you know, I'll naturally talk about the IB, looking at something like the Extended Essay, but even, you know, if we're talking about ninth or 10th grade, students are often given choices of passages they might want to explore or topics they want to analyze. For instance, when, you know, in 11th grade, they're writing an essay, it's, they can choose from anything they've studied that year and look at what sort of global issues are explored in that text. Or if they're doing an oral, they get to choose what they want to focus on. So, sometimes naturally it makes sense to hone in on something specific, but I would say we do a very good job of really expanding opportunity, asking open-ended questions, and just establishing parameters around them.
Ditto. At the elementary level, even when there is more evidence-based writing that takes place, students typically are provided with choice on what they're using to support that statement or quote or whatever it might be. Also embedded in the Writer's Workshop model is a place for brainstorming and choice. It varies depending on the grade level and the complexity of the writing. The passion projects that we talked about, I know that they have been discussed here, and we've had a chance to go and visit some classrooms and see it in action, and we're all really excited. We saw the motivation that students had when they were able to really research anything they wanted. Their notebooks were filled with ideas. And this is the type of collaboration that we're talking about. Right now, those intervisitations were through elementary classrooms, but also having that opportunity to speak with our colleagues, even at, you know, the 12th grade level, it provides perspective and it helps us hone in on our craft, so.
Good. Glad to hear that's happening across the levels, because I feel like for a student to undertake a writing project, first step is to have something to say, right? So, wherever there are places for choice, I'm happy to hear that. The other question I have, you know, one of the things we do know about improving writing is that feedback really matters, right? The time that a teacher can take to go through and work with a student and make suggestions or, you know, revisions, but sometimes we don't always feel prepared, right? Whether it's by subject or how deep do you go with reshaping a piece of writing? So, I know you mentioned that there's some professional development, but I'd love for that to continue to be a focus, to really make sure that teachers have the time, the planning periods, the support, to feel prepared to help our students improve their writing, because AI is not going to write everything, right? Thank you.
I think, Dr. Downing, your point is well-taken about feedback, and one of the things Kate Roberts does really well is the idea of learning progressions. And what that allows us to do is give very concrete linear steps about how a student can take writing from a particular level to that next level, to developing a skill, like breaking down a skill that might be a robust and difficult-to-quantify skill into concrete steps that says, hey, out of the three or the four steps you did really well, here's the last thing you need to do to really prove that you can master that skill. So, feedback comes not only in the idea of a teacher conference, but also having concrete ability to look at a writing progression and say, where do you think you are? And that self-assessment piece is also tremendously valuable to our young writers. And to follow up on what Jen Pascarella said about our visit to the WIN period, we got to see second-grade students writing and producing, your idea about producing, at a level that I was super, super impressed with. It was at Hewitt School, we walked into a second-grade classroom, and we had students writing seven, eight paragraphs on a particular topic that they were interested in. So, your point about choice, your point about production is really well-made, and I think our push into the WIN period has really helped us structure that ability.
Thank you, because writing's hard, and students figure that out pretty early in life, so the more fun we can make it, I think the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have so many questions, just a few comments. First of all, I love the direction that we're heading in general. I think prioritizing writing is really important. I've said it before, I think you don't realize your clarity of thought until you try to put it on a page, and I think the act of writing something really forces you to think about what you're thinking. So, I'm really happy the direction we're moving. Just a couple of, like, thoughts or suggestions. The integrated units at the elementary, I think, have been a great addition. And I know, at least at Riverside, we got a chance to see some of that at parent-teacher conference times, but I think it would be great if we could find a way to share student work with parents, like, more regularly as the units maybe are completing. I think it would be great for parents to really have a look into how their children are progressing in a more regular way. So, that's one thought. A second thought, you know, I know Mr. Murphy said this used to exist at the high school, some kind of writing lab where, and that no one ever went, but I would love for next year to try to think of a way to get opportunities for students to get feedback. I think feedback is very important, and the fact of the matter is, if you're teaching, if you're an English or Social Studies teacher, teaching five periods a day, that's 125 students, there is, it is virtually impossible for you to provide timely, meaningful feedback on every piece of writing that is coming across your desk. It's just, there's not enough hours in the day to really make that happen, so. And differentiation for different kids based on where they are and what their progression should be is super important, so I would just love to maybe think about ways we could try to evolve that process, you know, at the secondary level in particular. And then, just one third thought, I went this year to a presentation at the middle school on executive functioning, given by one of our staff members, and it really hit home for me. And I think writing being complicated illustrates that, how hard it is for some kids to really marshal everything that's needed to write a coherent sentence, paragraph, essay, right? And I know, maybe it's in the math presentation, there was a mention of executive functioning focus as well, but I love that we're looking at that as a way to help support kids, not content-specific, but more skill development for what would help them, so.
You're right that we did mention the idea of executive functioning in the MTS-S component presentation that we did. So, one of the ways we're looking at support classes now is how do we help students with executive functioning, and we're trying to model on the secondary level, at least a common structure. It may not necessarily be common content, you might have to plug and play the content and/or the skill, but the idea of embedding an executive functioning, I don't want to say curriculum, but skill set that develops over time, that's age-appropriate, is something that we're very much interested in working on during the summer.
That's great, because I think that's really important, not just for writing, but for test-taking, for studying. There's so many facets that get touched by that, so that's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I agree. I am so happy because this is such a life skill that we're really doing so much work on, and it's something that will follow them, obviously beyond their K-12 experience, so well done, and the focus on this is really important, so thank you. I also love the opportunities to be creative, because it's just like reading. Kids want to read what they want to read, and they want to write what they want to write, so I love that you've kind of covered that. Thank you, Ms. Nissler, for explaining how the choice, and Dr. Downing for us in the question, I think that that's fantastic. My question is a basic one, and I'm a non-teacher, so this is coming from just a, looking through the presentation and watching children with pen and paper. Explain to me how we balance technology and Chromebooks and typing with physical, the art of physical writing, because that's how we all learned how to write, and I do think that there is something to be said about that editing process and that review when it's pen to paper, and I just want to know how the district handles that introduction and use of technology as they're kind of progressing.
Thank you for the question. It is a balance, and in the younger grades, we are being very specific around having a notebook, having a pen or a pencil, making sure that we have that paper, and then the Chromebook is used as the avenue of our research. There does have to be a time, though, throughout the school year, especially once we get to third grade, that we have to start teaching them how to not only type, but how to answer questions on the computer, because our state tests are now on the Chromebook, right? So, there is that balance, and we're trying to be very cognizant of that balance. As the students get older into the secondary level, you see a shift in just what their natural predilection will be for how they want to write. Are they writing by hand, or are they preferring to type? That's why the focus on routines such as the Keys to Literacy with the top-down topic web or the two-column notes, forcing that note-taking in that manner, like a Cornell note method, is imperative to get those ideas down, and then how do we take those ideas and put them into a draft form, either be it paper or computer?
That's great. I think that that's really important, because I do think everybody does learn differently, and we don't want to kind of eliminate this practice of learning how to, you know, maybe kind of cross out and just, you know, edit and move on as we write. So, I appreciate that you find that balance, and it's not one way or the other, so thank you for that. Second technology question, Mr. Rosenthal, you touched on it, and I knew you'd be back. I called it at the last meeting. You got a taste of the microphone, and you came back. You couldn't keep me away. For AI, obviously, from a teacher's perspective, talk to me about how teachers are prepared to recognize writing that's been kind of manufactured through AI versus, you know, just student content.
Okay, so, Mrs. Nissler has been working with this all year, so one of, we're really trying to create some kind of framework around that. So, something that we might want to consider is having students write some kind of writing in the beginning of the school year, so we can see what type of, how they're writing, and then move on from there. Throughout the day and throughout the way that students speak, and then the way that they're handing in things, you can tell the difference between something that has been totally AI-generated versus something that they have completed on their own. And then, we also want to think about the balance of what do we use AI for, and what is the appropriate use for AI, and not make it an adversarial tool, but make it a tool to help enhance the research process and help us take our thinking to another level, potentially. But regardless, there still needs to be that human element in whatever technology it is that we're using.
Yeah, I appreciate that balance as well, because I do think, I mean, we're a district that believes in teaching them AI and teaching them digital society and all of these things that are about the future, so we don't want to pretend that those are curse words, to your point. They're not bad things, and they're not bad tools, but trying to find the right ways to use them, and also, again, supporting our teachers and helping them. I think those methods are good, because I can't imagine in this world how you, you know, grade all these things and know where it's coming from and can speak to fidelity on the writing, so thank you very much. Thank you all for your work, I appreciate it, and looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that went into putting the presentation together. I think for me right now, with regards to writing, and really with reading, literacy in general, I feel like everything has become so complex and overly complicated and spinning in circles, and I think really what's at the root is just getting back to the basics with all of it, with thinking about how we align instruction K through 12, how we integrate reading and writing, writing specifically here, into the curriculum across the content areas in a uniform way, how we are providing substantial time for students to practice, and then how and when, because I fully appreciate time, are we able to provide them with meaningful feedback that they can directly use, revise, and edit their work in real time. You know, in just listening to the presentation, my notes are kind of all over the place right now, so I'm going to try to make it coherent. You know, I appreciate looking into having a primary resource to use, I think those are always helpful. I don't have much experience with Writing Revolution, I understand the concepts behind Writer's Workshop. I would really like to see us pick something that we can use K to 12, so that we don't have, there's not a differentiated approach. Specifically in instruction, when you're talking about some of your secondary teachers who by trade are historians or scientists, they might not have the same background in teaching, reading, and writing that someone who went to school for English had, and that's problematic, because social studies is a literacy class, science is a literacy class. And what's going on in social studies has to be the same thing that's going on in science, has to be the same thing that's going on in English. When I talk about a claim, that claim should be written essentially the same way, maybe slight nuance, between those three classes. It shouldn't be a separate process, it shouldn't be separate instruction. The same when we're talking about analytical writing, the same when we're talking about argumentative writing, the same when we're talking about research. Yes, there will be nuance, but there has to be a process. So, as I'm listening and thinking, I'm wondering, like, do we have instructional alignment? Have we done that? How are teachers being trained? When are they being trained? Are they using the same language? When we talk about the instruction that's When we talk about the instruction that's being given to students, like I'm hearing elementary students writing seven paragraphs, I don't have my seventh graders in social studies writing more than one paragraph for the majority of the year, because you can't write a solid essay, if you can't write a solid paragraph, if you can't write a solid topic sentence. So, even thinking about how do we scaffold writing? Is it worth writing seven paragraphs there, or mastering one and then building up to that, whatever that end goal is, backwards design it down? I don't know. Maybe for narrative writing, it would be different for claim-based writing, but these are things I'm thinking about. With regards to rubrics, do they align to the state standards? If I saw that rubric, do I see introduction, transition words, evidence? Do I see all of those elements? Do they look the same across the classrooms? Like, if I'm getting a social studies piece back, the rubric should be almost identical to science, English, again, with some nuance, maybe on our evidence, maybe how, where we do our reasoning when we talk about a claim. I just think the more that it's consistent, the more that students will internalize it, and the better results that we'll get. I also wonder, like, when we make these rubrics, do we have teachers across grade level designing them? Do we have the social studies, the science teacher, the English teacher on the seventh grade level, working together to really pick apart, what is my grade or my grade band mandating that my students can do? What does that look like in the rubric? Are we consistently doing these things? What is the consistency? And I think that is pretty much what my questions are. But again, it really just goes back to that idea of, writing needs to be aligned and integrated, and it cannot be siloed. It has to be a continuum. And I think the minute that that gets done, that's where we see the results, simple as possible. Thank you so much. I'm really looking very forward to seeing how this evolves.
I think your points are really well made. You're talking about a common language for instruction. All of what you're talking about is how that common approach across disciplines allows students to, instead of interpreting, you know, a different, a different approach in each content area, are we using a similar approach? And I think number one of the opportunities for growth, you'll see is more collaboration between and among departments. I think that's one of the key areas that we've started this year, both at the high school and the middle school, but it's certainly an area that we continue to need to evolve to. So, your point is well taken, I think we've taken some positive steps on that. I know that the high school takes consistent approaches on certain types of writing activities, and that we really look to the state in terms of their rubrics, about how we try to set those up to give our students the most opportunity possible when it comes to getting to the region's exams kind of thing. So, really well taken, certainly not a journey that is done by any means, but we've taken some positive steps.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Moriarty and your team for presenting this evening. One note that I do want to say on behalf of the board, one sad note, actually, earlier this evening on the PAR, we accepted Dr. Dias's resignation. So, on behalf of the board, I would just like to thank you for your service to our district and to our children. That building in Uniondale is very lucky to have you as their new principal, and you're going to make a real impact in the lives of their students and their families. All right, Mr. Gavin, turning to our second presentation.
That's right. We are moving from our, our, our writing presentation to our math presentation, so Dr. Moriarty's going to kick us off again with a new team to talk about our, our goal for looking at our math curriculum this year, so we can highlight some of the work that we've done and the recommendations we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gavin. I am pleased to open our session on the math review by highlighting our Board of Ed goal, to establish a five-year curriculum review cycle for all district curriculum areas. As we know, last year was our ELA review, and this year is our math review. So, the goals of our math review committee were to ensure effective mathematics curriculum and instruction K-12. We are committed to making sure that our mathematical experience aligns with the major concepts outlined by New York State, and we want to focus on ensuring coherence and creating a natural progression of mathematics, of our mathematical understanding. We also want to emphasize rigor through the conceptual understanding. Our team worked diligently to achieve these goals, and we are happy to share the progress with you tonight, and I'm here to welcome the team to you.
So, our math review committee consisted of teachers and administrators from all seven buildings, working in both one large committee and also broken up into three subcommittees. I was happy to serve with the elementary school on the elementary committee. One of the main missions of the committee was to create a shared vision for math for K to 12. That shared vision include the belief that all children can learn, that learning is a lifelong process, that all learners should engage with high-quality mathematics, and that while our mathematical program was guided in a clear set of content standards, it was grounded in the standards of mathematical practice. And you'll hear more about that today. I'm going to turn things over to two of our math teachers, Ms. Kellner and Ms. Starman, who will talk about some of the work that we did at the elementary.
So, our current state, for the last 15 years or so, there have been two math implementation teachers split between the five buildings. In the last four years, one year at a time, that number increased to five, and now there's one of us in each building. Throughout, there's always been a unified curriculum, timelines, and assessments across the district, but with one teacher in each building, there's more collaboration around our curriculum, timelines, and assessments, as well as support with implementation within the buildings. Implemented this year, we're devoting more time to math learning and have implemented scheduled math blocks for all grades K through five. Grades three, four, and five have double math blocks, each day averaging 80 minutes per day, and K one and two averaging 60 minutes of math learning per day. We also began using Eames Web this year as an additional screener to help identify learners in need of tier-three support. The results of this screener help us set targeted goals for learners and assist in Curriculum review. We recently worked with Guy Accardi, a consultant from Nassau Bosse's, to determine the quality and alignment of our curriculum to the next-gen standards. We used a quality review rubric put out by New York State to determine whether our curriculum aligns with, the depth of the standards, reflects evidence of the key shifts, is responsive to varied student needs, and regularly assesses whether students are mastering standards-based content. Upon review, we found that our curriculum is aligned to the content and practice standards and meets most or all of the criteria mentioned. There are a few standards that New York State has added in with the implementation of the next-gen standards, and as a team, we design lessons or units to address these standards.
First, let's talk about unit assessments. So, each grade level consists of eight units of study, and we've created an assessment for the end of each unit that we analyze each year and we revise as needed. This year, we implemented a system where each classroom teacher can have a clear view of learners who have mastered the grade-level standards being assessed, and those who are still working towards mastery. This system also provides useful data to us as we begin our review process. We also began to collect data about standards included on each unit assessment. We will analyze the spreadsheet that we created this summer to be sure we have a balanced representation of the standards. Another exciting improvement to our assessments is the addition of interview questions in grades one and two, as well as more written response questions in grades three through five. These additions allow the classroom teacher to get an important glimpse into the minds of their students and a deeper understanding of their thinking. New York State assessments. Each year, New York State provides us with a WASA, Wrong Answers Summary Analysis Report. From this report, we can see which questions our students performed well on and on which ones we did not do as well. We use this data to help drive our instruction. We also carefully analyze the questions released by the state to get a sense of whether they were fair, straightforward questions, where we should have done better, or other times where the questions, where maybe a large majority of students in Nassau County didn't do very well either, and maybe the questions were worded poorly, et cetera. In the former situation, we may need to make adjustments to our timelines to devote more time to certain topics. Some teachers use win period to work on these topics, others incorporate this into their instructional time. Sometimes, it's simply a matter of ensuring that we're varying our language and exposing our learners to various ways that questions or concepts might be presented. Professional learning. In addition to working with Guy Accardi from Bosse's, we also worked with National Mathematics Education Consultant, Annalise Record. This year, the five math implementation coaches worked with her. Next year, she is going to return to Rockville Center to work with our kindergarten, first, and second-grade teachers. As math implementation coaches, we support our teachers in deepening their understanding of content, student thinking, and instructional practices. We support the teachers and the mathematics program in various ways, including weekly morning meetings with each grade level, team meeting, team teaching, and modeling lessons to support teachers and all of our learners, grade-level planning, and professional development And now, Lisa Selechia will speak about the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to break it down into three parts. The first part, I'm going to talk about what we've done this year curriculum-wise, and then I want to talk a little bit about our excellent communication skills. And then I want to just mention something about our professional development that we did this year that's important at this point. So, we, we recognized that we had to do some changing when the next-generation standards were coming out, and we were so thrilled to have Guy Accardi from Bosse's work with us. So, this has been like a two-year process for the middle school. We met as a department first to see where the needs were and what we had to do with our standards, and then we did some shifting, and we decided to move certain things to sixth grade that were sometimes taught in seventh grade, because it was a better fit. As you know, we have double periods every other day in sixth grades, that allows for some extra practice to really hone in on the skills necessary to be successful throughout the next five years in math. This was like a multifaceted opportunity, because we were able to work within our department vertically, and we were also able to figure out where the best place was to teach the students so that they can find success in the middle school, because we all know that middle school is a very interesting time for students, and parents, and teachers as well, of course. So, Guy was great, because he set up this template for us, and so now it's really the best curriculum I think we've ever had in the middle school, because it really, the sixth-grade curriculum, seventh-grade curriculum, eighth-grade curriculum, all looks the same in the same template, where we identify what the key concepts of each unit are, and what standards are being met in that unit, what the vocabulary words are, and then our daily lessons as well. We worked very closely with administration, both in-house and also Dr. Moriarty and, and Mr. Gavin. We had many meetings during our planning sessions with them at the middle school, and then we were able to actually change our scope and sequence and make it really nice pacing. And we also supported those who chose the Math 8 curriculum this year as well, by rewriting that, by writing that curriculum for the first time. So, we think that with the changes, I was talking to Russ Hornig from the high school, the facilitator there, I think with the changes we made, I really feel like it's going to impact the ninth graders in the, in the next few years. We will see better results with geometry as well, because our, our seventh-grade team is going to be doing a lot of work in geometry. I've been looking at their materials, and it's really, really very good. The last piece I'll talk about with this is that we have been trying to continue to enhance, and we need some more with this for next year. Materials, daily lesson plans, our NYPD projects, things like that, our digital textbooks, quizzes, lessons, plans, data analysis, and all of that stuff, we've really worked very hard on this year, and that's going to just continue a lot next year. The communication part, I think, is what really ties everything all together, because we communicate within our department all the time, but it was really great when we were at some curriculum committee meetings, we were talking, the facilitators were talking, and we met with the geometry teachers, and that was wonderful, the conversations that happened between teachers from different buildings, because you don't really get to see them, and it was really wonderful to be able to talk about what, what skills they're great at, what things we need to improve at, and different ways to do it. We shared some ideas about some of our projects, they talked to us a little bit about Delta Math, and we're going to learn more about that next year and utilize that some more. We also had some meetings with the fifth-grade implementation teams, so I was there, as well as our sixth-grade math teachers, and we want to continue that next year as well, and we want our sixth-grade math teachers to meet with all of the fifth-grade teachers next year, or, yeah, probably early next year, hopefully, so that we can, you know, really tighten the vertical alignment there as well. We also, in the math department, I think we're famous for this, but we send out weekly emails to parents, and they tend to really like it. We tell them what we're up to, what to expect, what they should see, what tests are coming up, what projects, you know, when we're available for help and things like that, and we've gotten only positive responses with those emails. So, we'll continue to do that as well. We also have cluster meetings, and we had the parent-teacher conferences for the first time this year also. And then we, what's wonderful about this district is they really, you all want us to improve, and it's wonderful with the support. With our period eight planning session, the, that's the eighth-grade planning session, with all of the math teachers, including our ICT teachers, on a daily basis, not just once a week or once every other week, it's every single day we plan together, and that's the same thing with our sixth and seventh-grade math teams as well. And then we also have our cluster meetings with the guidance counselors, where we talk about at-risk kids and things, you know, what we can do to help them be successful. And the last piece I'll just mention today, sorry, I never use one of these little guys. Okay. Our last piece today is just to mention that we chose, on our own little story, I was at a, I was in Pennsylvania at a play, and I bumped into a colleague from 25 years ago when I taught in Queens, and she mentioned to me that she had just come back from this great conference, and it was by the author of this book called Building Thinking: Classrooms and Mathematics, and his name is Peter Liliodal, and she said, Lisa, you have to read this book, it's fantastic. So, when I brought it back to the middle school, two of the teachers had already put it in their cart in Amazon, they had already heard about this book, and they were thinking about reading it. So, we started a collegial circle this year, and we did two separate groups, the eighth grade was one, and six and seven was the other, and not everyone did it, but a bunch in each one, and some of this stuff is really interesting. We started to dabble in some of the ideas, but we didn't get through the whole book this year, and we're going to continue it next year and hopefully, you know, implement some of those practices as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Hi, I'm Ben Moss, one of the assistant principals at the high school. I appreciate the opportunity to talk here tonight about math in the high school, and I also have Russ Hornig, our math department facilitator, is here as well, and he and I certainly collaborate and work closely together. So, in the high school, we have 13 different math courses. It's probably our department with the largest breadth of courses and offerings to students. We have pathways and regions courses, we have through IB in 11th and 12th grade, and many of our students take AP courses in 12th grade as well. And we have some electives in math. We have a new one this year, Statistics and Probability, which has been extremely successful. And then we also have support classes in geometry, in Algebra II, as well as in IB Math Applications in 11th grade. So, we also, we, again, you'll hear a lot of themes of what the others have spoken about already with the curriculum review. We really had to focus on geometry, because that was an area that we've all discussed K to 12, has been an area that we wanted to focus on, and we looked at all of our assessments, which I'll get to, as well as the articulation and communication that others have discussed as well. So, as far as the geometry review, one of the themes is Guy Accardi. We worked with him as well in the high school, he came in for a day, worked with our geometry teachers, as well as Russ, and he, he really is a curriculum expert, and he worked with us on geometry, looking at these next-generation learning standards, and how we can start aligning to those as that new curriculum will be implemented next year. And so, in working- And so, in working with him, not only to discuss these, the differences between the previous curriculum and these next-generation standards, and examples like the new definition of the trapezoid, which I won't bore you with right now, but we also talked about what we could be doing right now with our students. So, and I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. But, so that was a big part of why he was there as well because, again, we're looking at how to really target our instruction to help students, especially those who are struggling in geometry. And so, we also had training on scoring the Regents exams. So, a lot of our teachers have participated in training, norming the scoring process, also run by Guy Accardi from Bosse's. And really what we're doing in our math department, we're talking about reasoning, the practical application of concepts, and using whatever we can as tools to solve problems, step-by-step solving problems in novel scenarios that they may see on state exams or other types of, whether it's IB, AP. So, we also looked at assessment. As Lisa mentioned, we brought in Delta Math. Delta Math is an online program that our teachers are able to use with the students. Students can log in and answer questions. A lot of the teachers use it on a weekly basis, and they're individual questions for each student. And so, again, we're able to target the instruction to each individual student. We're able to learn, the teachers are able to learn, as you can see in their presentation, what each student knows, what they don't know, what their areas of weakness are. And the students can then have more questions in that one problem area. They can even watch videos in that area. So, the teachers have used, been using this. I have to give a thank you to Andrea Cooper Smith, one of our teachers who brought this in. We're now implementing it, as Lisa mentioned, at the middle school. We've also had different types of assessments, more than we've had in the past. Teachers are giving do-now quizzes, holding students accountable, and making sure that they are prepared for the lesson each day. Whether these count or not, the students really seem to come in more prepared when these quizzes are given. We also have in geometry, a map project, you know, using things like parallel lines and transversals to draw a map, and they are assessed this way as well. That's a new type of project. And if you read anything today in the paper about what New York State is doing, different types of project-based assessments are certainly something that we're going to be doing more of. We also have the IB Internal Assessment, a paper that the students have to write in math, different type of writing, and we were just talking about writing certainly a lot. And I think this is a good opportunity for students who maybe are, enjoy math and don't think about writing in math and what they can do with that. So, it's, there's a lot of different things we're doing with assessment now. So, we also are analyzing data more and more. We're using ZipGrade instead of Scantrons. And ZipGrade gives us data, Dr. Walsh brought that into the high school, gives us data on, again, like wrong answer, like we were talking before, the wrong answer analysis that we have from the state each year on our Regents exams. The ZipGrade will do that as well. We also use the gap analysis and the WASA reports, like we mentioned, for the Regents exams. So, we can see where we perform teacher-to-teacher, teacher-to-the-school, and our school as we compare to other schools in Nassau County and New York State. Then in looking at our communication, just like we talked, just like the other teachers who were up here were talking about, we had many meetings. And as Lisa mentioned, and I have to reiterate, how informative and useful it was to meet with teachers at the middle school and at the elementary schools, how much we were able to share, what we found common, where we found differences, and working and learning from them was extremely useful. So, we had those meetings, we had curriculum meetings, our teachers meet every day, our entire math department has eighth period together to meet. We have ICT, common planning meetings for the teachers. We also had individual teachers. I met individually with each teacher this year to talk about students who were struggling. So, whether that was in geometry and Algebra II especially, and what is an action plan we can put in place for those students to, again, target the instructions to them. So, whether we needed to place them in support classes and labs, whether we needed to communicate with parents, bring parents in for more meetings to discuss with them. We did have the parent-teacher conferences, which were extremely helpful. But even on top of that, we had additional meetings with teachers and parents. We even had, towards the end of the year, as assess began for our seniors, some of those teachers who had fewer students in class now, we were able to use them to push into our labs and increase the ratio of teacher to student, each one of those labs. So, you might have a lab of six students with two now math teachers in there, really targeting the instruction. You even see in the picture, Ms. Fraser, one of our teachers, working with a student independently in our labs because we're able to do that more now that we have more teachers in there. So, there's a lot of things we've been doing as far as communicating with each other, with the students, with the families, with the community. And again, I appreciate your time to talk about what we do at the high school. So, I'll turn it over back to Dr. Moriarty with recommendations or Jim.
I think it was supposed to be you.
So, the committee worked all year, and then we make recommendations for K to 12, including continued monitoring and adjustments of our core instruction, continuing to expand our Tier Two and Tier Three support for the students, more professional development throughout the school year, more articulation meetings, progress monitoring at the middle school and high school, and additional assessments for the students across the board. So, that was the work that we did this year. Questions from the board?
Thank you so much. Thank you to the team for a very thoughtful presentation to wrap up our curriculum review area of focus of math for the year. Just a couple of thoughts that I had during the presentation. I very much appreciate, I think I said this at the last meeting as well, the deliberate and intentional focus on ways for our staff to be able to carve out time to collaborate with each other. We have a tremendous amount of talent expertise on the staff as evidenced tonight, not just by the presenters, but those that were mentioned in terms of bringing resources in and ideas in to share. So, it's very much appreciated and valued by the board. And I hope that that continues in the year ahead as we continue to look at math. And Ms. Selechia, I will say, yes, the math department is known for their email communications and their detailed emails, and it's very much appreciated by the parents at the middle level. So, thank you very much on behalf of all of the parents that have personally thanked the math teachers over the years. It's something that's very much appreciated, and thank you. I will turn it over at this time for comments or questions from board members.
Thank you. This was a heavy lift and a lot of folks involved, and I know it's not easy to find the time, to make the time, to continue to have these ongoing conversations, and it's much appreciated. In terms of elementary math, for parents watching at home who are looking for resources, any sort of ways that they can help their elementary-age students at home with math, how would you tell them, where would you tell them to look, and how can they access some resources?
Great question. Thank you so much. So, we have a K-5 parent handbook, and in that K-5 parent handbook, there is, for each grade level, a math section. And that math section brings us directly to a website that the five implementation coaches have been working on for years. And it directly relates to every single unit that they're working on, but, and that's what I can add to this. I'm sure they can add so much more.
Ditto. That's what I would have said. And on that website, on the Rockville Center website, if you go to Elementary Math Resources, you can find any unit for any grade. You don't need to log into our program. It's all very accessible and very user-friendly. There are videos under Math Words and Ideas, especially if you wanted to familiarize yourselves with some of the language or how things are presented, how your kids are experiencing the math during the day within the classroom. Such a really great place to look. You can also access the games that are part of our curriculum, also very accessible and easy to follow and get to for you, for your kids. They could probably show you a whole lot. But yeah, that's, that's really like, that would be our first go-to resource because it very closely, it mimics what the kids are experiencing daily.
And I would just, just add to that, also look in their workbooks if they take their workbooks home because you can look back and see how they, how they worked on problems. But definitely ask, ask your children, ask them, even, even if you, even if they don't remember how they did it, just start by asking them questions, you know, like, "Well, how might you start this problem? How might you think about this?" Or, "What's happening in this problem? What do you know about this?" Just to get them thinking about it. It's, you know, sometimes I hear parents saying that there's, that their child says like, "No, I have to do it a certain way." They don't have to do it a certain way. They learn many different strategies, and they learn these strategies from each other as well. And they can do whatever makes sense to them. They have to make sense of the problems, and they can approach them in whatever they way they want. And the other thing that I would say is just in general, if parents are looking to help their children, I would say, play games, like board games, you know, all the old-fashioned kind of games, any games with dice and that kind of thing. Just talk about, talk about math with your kids as much as you can, just talk about numbers as they come up in general, anything that, anything that comes up. Money, you know, when you're in the store with them, ask them, "How much change do you think we're going to get?" Have them estimate things all the time. Estimating is so great, you know, "How many, how many books do you think? Like, how many seats might there be in this auditorium? How, what could we, you know, like, maybe we could count one row and think about that." So, whenever things, I mean, things like that come up all the time, so just, just go with it.
Thank you. Making it relevant for them from an early age, I think that's, that's very good advice.
Yeah, because it's, it's part of their world, so just, you know, engage with it with them.
Thank you. My other question thought really was more towards the high school range. And Mr. Moss, you mentioned there were 13, I think you said, available math courses for students between grades nine through 12. And I'm wondering, are we seeing a robust enrollment throughout even once students maybe don't have to take math anymore? Are they continuing in math? Are there classes that are less enrolled? Or you mentioned statistics as a, as a new option.
Yeah, so, yes, is the short answer. There is great enrollment, and students are encouraged to continue and challenge themselves for as long as possible. So, whether that means they continue on to IB, IB Analysis in 11th grade, and AP Calculus BC as a senior, or if they move on from Algebra II and decide to go into Statistics and Probability, which Ms. Lay, one of our teachers, has done a wonderful job with making it, again, a more hands-on, project-based course in statistics and useful statistics. As we said, the practical application of math for students. And we've seen increased enrollment in that from this year to next year as well. We're going to see that. And so, it's good to see that students are continuing with math for as long as they can, so yes. The majority of our students take math for all four years of high school.
Thank you, everyone who worked this year, all the hours that you put in, and thank you for presenting tonight in no particular order. So, I think it's, I think it's great that there are the opportunities at the high school, and I actually think that the, having the guidance meetings with 10th grade families this year has made a big difference just in allowing parents to understand the options, understand that the statistics course is more, you know, project-based. And it's very hard to know from the course description what the right choice for your child is, so I applaud that as part of this bigger picture. It's funny that you mentioned the parent outreach at the elementary school. That was another of my comments. I think, I love that we are supporting the idea that everyone can learn math. I think the parent generation doesn't, didn't have that experience growing up in school. And I think there's a gap to continue to bridge there. And it's funny, I actually wrote down, no one wants to hear this, but one of the silver linings of remote instruction was students being able to hear their teacher, teaching them on video and like watching it. And I remember sitting there with my kids, like, and it was helpful to me as a parent to hear how the students were being taught. And it might not have been how I was taught, but that process was very informative. I will be honest, I didn't know that that existed on the parent handbook. I think one takeaway for me for next year is we really need to do a better job of publicizing that. And I know it was new this year, so, and it was a work in progress, but now that it's up and running, the more we can encourage families to access that, particularly on the math side of things, I think that will be very helpful because the kids do come home, and, and I sit there, you know, and many parents sit there and say, "Well, I don't know how you're supposed to do it. I know how I, you know, I did long division this way, but I don't know how to do it, you know, the new way." So, I don't even know if there can be, it can be embedded in the homework assignments to have the kids take their parents on this handbook, on this website, access a video, just the more that you can, and I agree, that the students can teach us more than we can teach them sometimes. So, I would like to prioritize that next year. And then one other just thought process, the template that Ms. Selechia mentioned using in the middle school from Guy Accardi, is that same template being used at the high school or no?
Yes.
So, now all of our courses are following that same?
For math six through ninth grade right now.
Okay. Do we have plans to put it into 10th, 11th, 12th, or no?
As we continue to review, geometry was the most important for us for right now. So, as we move up into 10th and 11th, we will work with Mr. Moss and the math team and with Guy and talk about how we would make sure that there's that alignment and cohesion.
That's great. And then my only other thought was, I know we do this a little bit here and there. I know Ms. Okaleka did this a little at the middle school. But I would love to see us expand our peer mentoring opportunities. I think we have a lot of really strong math students who could, or they're kind of an untapped resource to help their peers. And sometimes when it's a peer interaction, the students that are struggling are more receptive. So, if we could just think about that for the future, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It's a really important foundational skill as well, just like writing, so I'm really happy we tackled it, and thank you to everybody on your committee for doing it. I only have one question, then just a couple of quick comments. At the elementary level, when we're talking about the wrong answer analysis, do we also look at the NWEA? I know that every particular student can find out in their, through their own report, what maybe was missed or what areas of math were not as strong. But then are the teachers analyzing that on the whole outside of those individual kind of assessments?
We are looking at the NWEA. It helps us drive what we're doing in tier, for our Tier Three and moving into our Tier Two support. And we are looking at the matrix that it provides us to see how we can group certain students based on the different domains of math, and we can still get a lot better. It is a very complex system, so for us to continue our learning in that would be definitely something that we should continue our focus on.
I, I thank you because since I know every student does take the NWEA versus not every student, we still have a high opt-out rate in our New York State assessments, so I just wanted to make sure we could still utilize that same idea with the assessments that all of the kids do take. So, that was my one question. I wanted to double down on something Mrs. Kellner said, which I think is so important in how we're teaching that foundational math skill in terms of that it's not one method, but all methods, and really making sure that students understand all the options that they have to solve problems. And they really do learn from each other. And I love that our teachers are encouraging students to show what they know in that way when it comes to math, you know, "This child solved it this way, this child solved it that way," and it's shared. So, I think that they come home impressed with one another, speaking to Mrs. Gruner's point about peer-to-peer. They do really take those, those kind of tips from each other, and they're doing it at a very young age. So, kudos to all of you at the elementary level for building that foundation. I think that continues throughout. I have to also compliment the middle school. It's such a vital time for math, making that transition from K to five over to getting ready for our Algebra Regents. And your team at the middle school does a fantastic job of getting them prepared for those exams all three years, not just eighth grade, but really all three years. So, thank you for that. And then lastly, my experience with the high school so far in math has been absolutely amazing. Mr. Hornig, I have to tell you, I run so many carpools of high school boys. You are a main topic of conversation, so you want to answer the question about So you want to answer the question about electives and people and how many people take it. You told us at Back to School Night that you have, I think, two large sections of kids taking advanced math topics. This is an elective. Um, I, I was floored by what you told us at Back to School Night. But to kind of reiterate, you have created such a healthy competitive culture in these ma- this math elective that these students are talking about it on their way to soccer, on their way to basketball. They could be talking about anything, but they're talking about advanced math topics. And I'm just driving along with a big smile on my face. So kudos to you, um, and all the work you do at the high school. It, it really is making an impact and I appreciate that they have so many options. Statistics is a huge higher ed math, um, that if they go into social sciences and research and all of these things, being able to access that in a high school, to me, is a gift. It really truly is. It's a very, very hard class for students when they get to higher ed. So thank you for, um, helping to bring that to Rockwell Center. And again, just, I'm really so impressed with this department. It's been a fantastic journey. Thank you for everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the entire committee. I, I appreciate the work that was done. Um, and I think we'll probably always have differences on our opinions of mathematical instruction and that's fine. But a few thoughts that I have from the review or asks, I guess, is really just ensuring that curriculum and instruction is responsive to all children's cognitive development and their cultural needs. Thinking a lot about primary level math as I have a child in the primary grades and really wondering how we could make math more play-based, speaking into the cognitive development of a five, six, and seven-year-old. That is how science tells us, they learn through play. There are a lot of great primary resources for play-based mathematics for the primary grades. I'd love to investigate that. As we move through the elementary school, continuing to prioritize collaboration and hands-on mathematics versus worksheets. Prioritizing when we are doing worksheets, making sure that simply, simplistically, that the worksheets are relevant, the questions are relevant, the problems are relevant, including the kids' names in the classes, scenarios that they might engage in in 2024. Thinking about what their interests are when we teach topics like statistics or percents, maybe trying to tie in sports, basketball. When we teach patterns, thinking about the faces in our room, thinking about their cultures. How can we incorporate that into instruction? When we teach time zones, distance, thinking about holidays, countries, heritage, how can we tie that into mathematics instruction? Thinking about the vision that you shared, which I like. I think that there's a lot of amazing points in this vision and a lot of goals to aspire to. One part that's striking me is this idea of developing positive math identities and building confidence in our mathematicians. It makes me wonder, how are we showing our students identities through math? Do all of our students see themselves as mathematicians? Two weeks ago, I was at my graduation for my ed leadership program and one of the student speakers at the ed school's, um, convocation. She is a daughter of Iranian immigrants and she is a math major. She is going off onto the world to be a math teacher. And she talked about growing up in Nebraska, which is very different, obviously, than here. She never knew that they were Persian mathematicians. She had never even seen a mathematician. So as she went into college, she was just awestruck by this is me, I am this field, but had never known that growing up. So like, to what extent are we infusing that into mathematic instructions? Do our students see black, brown, white mathematicians? Do they see female mathematicians, male mathematicians? If we want them to have that identity, we have to build that identity for them. So that's something I'm thinking about. I'm thinking about how we differentiate instruction for diverse learners. Looking at our results three through eight, we have an achievement gap based on race, class, and ability. These kids are going to the same schools, they're receiving the same instruction, and they are very different outcomes. Why is that? Why is that still going on and how are we going to fix that? I'm thinking about K through five instruction. Are we still moving forward using investigations as our primary resource?
Yes.
And we're sure that that really emphasizes conceptual understanding over procedural?
When we analyzed it to the rubric, we came to the conclusion that everything is what we want it to be and anything that was missing, we, of course, have made adjustments for. And then the math implementation coaches are very good at bringing in, uh, different mathematical tools and manipulatives and making sure that the students are utilizing and helping train the teachers who might not, um, have that as their primary background, but training the teachers in that in order to be able to make sure that mathematics is coming alive in each and every classroom.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I'm also wondering with regards to differentiated instruction, there has been asked from members of our community for more options at the high school, um, specifically for those students who are not ready for the rigor of an IB or an AP course or who just do not want to take those courses. I know that we do have some electives, but there's a general feeling that that could be more robust for those students. Um, I would appreciate if we could continue to think about that. And then last, well, second to last, um, another thing I'm thinking about is how we're engaging families. And I think it speaks into the point that Mrs. Gruner and Mrs. Hackett had about how we're supporting our parents, our families, our caregivers to support their students at home. We do have that resource, which is excellent. And I think that there are probably a lot of caregivers who do lean into that and can use that. But I think we also have to remember that there are some families who might not be able to access that resource or might not feel like they have the confidence to actually use it. I'm wondering if we can investigate incorporating or implementing academic parent-teacher teams at the elementary level where we bring parents in and really talk about them in a very nuanced way about their own children and really give them strategies that they can use to support their students at home. I think that would go a long way into chipping away at our achievement gap. And then finally, um, in reviewing the algebra curriculum, again, I appreciate that we took time to do that review and that we are aligned and we feel confident in that. I would ask though, please, if we have not done already, the eighth grade algebra curriculum and the ninth grade algebra curriculum should be different. Our ninth grade students should not have to repeat half of eighth grade curriculum if they take Math eight when they are learning Math nine in ninth grade. And then last but not least, just going back to the vision, there's one word in here that I would really love for you to change. It says, "Students will develop mathematical proficiency." I've said it before and I will say it again, this district should not be hanging its hat on proficiency. We should be hanging our hat on mastery. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, turning to policies. You all don't want to stay for policies?
Go now, please go now.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, currently at stage one, we have seventy-one ten on attendance. Any comments or questions on seventy-one ten?
I have a couple of things.
Yep.
On page two, I think it's page two, it's my page two. It's under, under the section Determination of Excused and Unexcused Absences, Tardiness, and Early Departures. There, it, it doesn't mention doctor's appointments as either excused or unexcused. And I feel like that's a common reason why students are missing either a full day or part of a day. So I just wanted to clarify where that would fall, whether it's excused or unexcused and, and specifically name it in the policy so that everybody knows.
Can I interject?
Yes.
So I see it does include as an excused excuse personal illness. Um, and I would certainly interpret personal illness to include, I went to the doctor for a personal illness. I would be hesitant to include the, just the phrase doctor appointment because I can go to the dentist at two o'clock on Tuesday, but I can also go at five o'clock and not miss school. You know, a doctor appointment can be a checkup that I'm healthy, but mom scheduled my checkup for one o'clock, so now I have to miss school when my checkup maybe could have been done at five o'clock or even on a Saturday. So I, I would be hesitant to include just doctor and not limit it to what it's limited now, which is I'm actually ill and I can't go to school. Maybe I'm home ill, maybe I'm at the doctor ill, but regardless, I'm excused because I'm not in school. I'm ill at the doctor, I'm ill at home. So that's my long answer.
My only concern with that is first, it's, it's not always as easy as getting an appointment at five o'clock just with life and doctor availability and multiple kids in a family and all sorts of things. You know, uh, some appointments are full-day appointments that you have to take your child to.
That is true.
For a variety of reasons. Like there's, there, I understand it does, it can encompass many things, but, um, I'm raising it for this reason so we can discuss it. My personal preference would be to make it an excused. I feel like the policy as a whole addresses if it becomes chronic or it becomes, um, an issue where students are taking too many liberties and not keeping up with their work. I feel like there are other places in the policy to, to manage that. But I, I do think we need to sort of clarify for families whether a doctor's appointment is an excused or unexcused absence. And I, personally, I would lean towards making an excused absence, but I'm, I'm open.
Yeah, so on that note, just in that same paragraph, um, when it says attendance at health clinics, what is captured by that reason?
Yeah, I'm not sure if health clinic is the same as doctor. Um, I'm not sure where that phrase came from. It probably encompasses an appointment with a physician. Um, I'm not, just sitting here, I'm not sure where health clinic came from and, um, what particularly that encompasses, but that's something we can certainly, you know, look into with respect to, you know, your next stage for this policy.
We're not prohibited by, or are we prohibited by adding to clarify if we choose to do that? In terms of if we wanted to add that to our policy or is that something that?
To add doctor appointment?
Yes.
The excused and unexcused absences are district prerogative. So you can, you can add anything as long as it is reasonable. Um, you can certainly make changes to these lists. That, that's your prerogative as a district?
I'd, I'd want to be aligned. I'd want to be aligned and see what other people have out there as opposed to how they have it written. Because to me, it's not listed as an unexcused, but it's not really called out as an excuse. So there's some gray area there about how we treat it. And I'd be very interested to see what other districts, um, call out in their policy. So that would be one thing that we could look at before going into next meeting, that in addition to the legality of doing some research on about whether or not we can say doctor's appointment or not, we can also kind of do a little bit of background to say, how do we have, how do other people count this in the policy?
I mean, I-
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I for one would be okay including it, but we can look at that.
Yeah, I wondered if there was some other word we could put with doctor's appointment, whether it was emergent or some sort of explanation as to?
Or even like a layer of, um, approval, maybe with the nurse's office that, like to Janet's point, if a student needs like a specialist and it's going to take a long period of time, that is different than getting a physical at ten AM versus five PM if they are available. Again, sometimes it doesn't always happen, but there are children that have specific needs and maybe there's an approval process on which one of those appointments are, um, excused. I'm not sure if that's how we want to go about it, but I agree with Mr. Gavin. Maybe like poking around and seeing how other districts do it might be helpful, but I would be apt to add it in some way as well. I think it's a really good point.
To me, I think, you know, it's not specifically called out, but there's enough in that policy that you can make the argument that it's rational. So, um, let us do a little, let us do a little research on that. Because if there's some reason that the specific term is not used in the, in the, in the policy or other people don't use that specific term, I'd like to know a little bit more.
I would also ask Mr. Gavin that you find out for us by the next meeting then, how we're currently coding those. So I know personally, I've taken out for specialist appointments my child. So I, I would just be, what are current practices while we're looking at this policy? Thank you. Anything else?
I just had a question, not so much on the verbiage of the policy, but more on like the implementation of it. So under Descriptions of Strategies to Meet Objectives, it says, "Develop a comprehensive student attendance policy." When was the last time that policy was reviewed?
It probably says it at the bottom.
It should say it on the last page.
On the last?
Flipping to it.
No, it's not this policy. This one says, "Develop a comprehensive student attendance policy." Is that, is this the comprehensive student attendance policy? Or is there like a policy in their handbook, I think is more what I'm asking about? I, I, that reads to me as like a handbook policy. And when was the last time that was reviewed?
Well, we, go ahead.
You're asking if the buildings have their own individual policies?
I, I don't, I guess so. I, it's, to me, it just says comprehensive student attendance policy based on the recommendation of a district policy development team. That includes representation from the board. So it reads to me as something other than this policy.
And if it is this policy, I see on the last page, it was originally adopted in two thousand and two and then amended over the years.
Yeah, I think the one that I'm asking about is probably different. It would probably, I'm assuming, would be in a student handbook.
I think you're, you're asking about how this is implemented on the building or translated to people in the building.
Well, I'm, I want to know where this thing is. Like, do we have a district policy development team? Because our policy says that we're supposed to. That includes representation from us, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and the community.
This is a similar, this is a similar setup to the way we do discipline, where we do the code of conduct.
Yeah.
So this is something that we would get set up.
Okay, but so my question is, when is the last time we looked at that?
I would probably say two thousand and two.
Okay, so I'm gonna request that we call that committee or that team together and review what our actual, what we're actually saying about attendance. Um, and I'm also curious about, um, point E, where it says, "Develop early intervention strategies to improve school attendance for all students." Just again, thinking about when is the last time that we looked at that intervention list? Is it still applicable? Is there, um, better strategies that best practice would tell us will help to get kids at school? Especially because I know most districts are facing chronic absentee issues? If we could, as part of that team, really review what we're doing, what our community outreach looks like, how we're engaging families in the importance of attending school?
Yeah, so I think it makes sense to go back and do that and get our answers to these questions first. Hold this where it is, right? And then we'll come back at our next meeting and report out in terms of what information we have found out and then our next steps moving forward.
I just want to add one extra question then if we're-
Yeah.
Because I agree with you, I was gonna ask that we hold it.
Yeah.
This section on attendance incentives, I'm also curious as to if we actually do do that. Because this whole policy to me had a lot of flaws in it. But to Mrs. Messier's point, I don't want to put anything in here that we're not doing. So if we could really take a strong look at that. And I know that this is ridiculous, maybe you shouldn't give me coffee and cookies, but why are we putting hunting in there as an unexcused absence example? I just think it's silly. I, so I really just think this one needs another full look. Um, it's a very random thing to put in there.
We'll take a look, but, uh, I think you're right about the coffee.
I think the coff- I, I appreciated the coffee, but maybe I'm gonna get punchy.
The hunting, uh, is probably something that is New York statewide.
It came from, right. This was an Area One Boise sample.
It's an Area's one, Area One Boise.
Yeah, so this is an Area One sample. I do see on the last page, it was last amended in two thousand and sixteen. Um, so it is a good time to review it again now. Um, and most districts have policies that look almost identical to this entire document. Um, but certainly, um, you know, we'll assist the superintendent and, you know, sign to see what other districts do. If there are changes, because you are allowed to make changes, particularly with respect to excused and unexcused absences, you're allowed to make those changes. So we'll, we'll take a look at all these issues that you raised.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple more before we move off if we're gonna do it. The section on attendance incentives, the first line reads, "In order to encourage student attendance, the district will develop and implement grade-appropriate or building-level strategies and programs, including but not limited to." So the way that I am reading it, it is committing us to developing subsections A through G. I'd like to change the wording. us to developing subsections A through G. I'd like to change the wording to list those as suggested options for encouraging attendance, but not state that we are going to do all of those options.
Okay.
And then I also, if possible, would like to move that section. It comes in the middle of two sections about discipline and consequences for not being, you know, for absenteeism. So if, I think it's, I think it would be better placed earlier in the policy, and then all of the language about what we do with students who are absent can follow after. And then I had another comment on, sorry, under disciplinary consequences, which is on my page five, the last sentence, it reads, "Individual buildings and grade levels will address procedures to implement the notification process to parents and guardians for students who are facing a consequence for their unexcused absence." I don't, I don't feel comfortable leaving that up to a grade level decision, so can we just, by individual buildings, I'm assuming that leaves it in the hands of the principal of the building?
Yeah.
Can we take grade levels out?
I would just say, "Building principals will address."
Fine.
You want to say, "Building administration"?
Yeah.
Because the principal may delegate.
Sure.
Administration is fine.
Yeah.
Because then you could have Designee, Attendance Office, whatever it is.
And then my final comment at the bottom of that page, the last section there, Building Review of Attendance Records. The first sentence reads, "Building principal will work in conjunction with the building attendance clerk and other staff to review attendance records at the end of each term." I'd like to define what that means. I don't know. I would, I guess, my, do we do this already, and how often do we do it? And should it be quarterly, you know?
We do. We do it at every building at various intervals. So for example, here in the high school at the attendance office, they review the attendance every single day. So as, if we start to notice a pattern with particular students, like they've been absent two or three days, there's a phone call home after three days to make sure that everything's okay. After five days, there's a wellness visit. If we don't get the proper, like, it might be like a student had an accident or something like that, that, and we're satisfied with that, but if we don't get information that satisfies us, we do a home wellness visit. We also review this at the high school level with, Rachel Green reviews it with the entire at-risk team about how that plays into students that are either falling behind or at risk of not passing a class. So we do that as well. And at the elementary level, you know, it's pretty much the same thing without the whole layer of an attendance. So the building principal gets an update about who is absent on a daily basis. You can easily access that information. You can communicate it to your psychologists and your at-risk teams to make sure that we are in good shape about how is attendance impacting performance.
Great. So I, I think this statement doesn't actually even reflect our, the thoroughness of our policies. So if we could just, I don't know what to replace it with or how to replace it. I just think it should be more in line with what we actually do.
I think if we put in the word semester right now as a, as a catch-all, but we could, or quarterly, something like that, we could do either one. But please know that there are robust systems that happen all day, every day about attendance.
You could just put regularly, if you want to, I don't know. I'll-
I'd rather put it like with a definitive timeframe, that we can go with the school calendar.
Okay.
So as opposed to like something that's regularly, somebody might say, what does regularly mean, you know, that kind of thing. So I could say quarterly.
Okay.
Can I just make one other request, too? I'm interested to know what our rate of chronic absenteeism is at each school grade level?
Sure.
If that information could be provided, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I should have prefaced this section of policies, but we, the board had asked to pull all policies currently in our manual on attendance for that reason, to look at it as a group of policies. So thank you. So we will hold it for now, 7110. We'll come back at our next meeting, I guess, which is reorg really, right?
Yeah, it's reorg.
In July. And one of our meetings in July, we will report back what we have found in terms of our current practice, and any suggested changes to language before we move forward with that. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, it works, yes.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. So at the next, we have 8411, which I think I'm going to ask you, counsel also to chime in on this, we're going to look to remove this from the policy. Can you just speak to that, and then the process for which we can, or by which we can remove it this evening?
Sure. If the board wishes to vote right now to remove or rescind the policy from your policy book, you can do so today. Your other option would be to, you know, have the policy just moved down the list, and you can certainly address it when you complete stage three of your, with your other policies. My understanding is that there is an intention to address it today.
Mm-hmm.
And I see you nodding your head. So any board member can just say, "I hereby move to rescind policy 8411 from the board policy book." Get some yays.
Yeah.
And we'll move from there.
And we're doing this because we don't need to have this. And part of our review of our policy manual was to streamline and get rid of the policies, some of the policies that we don't need as-
Correct. So policy 8411 as a policy is not required by law. We do have a lot of policies that are not required by law. Some we keep in, some we don't. This one is just, it's unnecessary to be in your policy book, and you're allowed by law to take it out.
Thank you. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, turning to policies currently at stage two, 1331, Duties of the District Clerk. Okay to move this?
Yes.
Thank you. 1520, Special Meeting of the Board of Education. Okay to move this as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Currently at stage three, we have 1334, Appointment and Duties of the Claims Auditor. Okay to move this for approval?
Yes.
And 1339, Duties of the Internal Auditor. Okay to move this as well to approval at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gavin, we have acceptance of a gift this evening.
We do. Our PTAs, our collective PTAs throughout the Rockville Center School District each year generously donate to support our AIM Arts, our Arts Program at our elementaries and our middle school. And this year, they have given us a very generous gift of $89,088.
Wow.
So this has been something that the board has approved year after year. This, I think, is one of the higher numbers that we've gotten in a long time. So again, once again, we're super thankful to our PTAs of Culvert, Hewitt, Riverside, Watson, Wilson, and the Middle School to fund the cost of our AIM program.
Yes, thank you very much. Our students benefit tremendously from these programs, and the board is grateful for the gift. May I have a motion to accept the gift from PTA?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much to the PTA. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for Action K2 through 16?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Just a note of thanks to everybody up here, to my left, Mr. Gavin, and the administrative team, Mrs. Celiberty for all of your work this year, and to my right, my four fellow board members. Thank you very much for a year of, another year of service and a productive year at that. Congratulations to all of our students, especially those that are graduating, and have a great evening. We will see you in July. Thank you. Oh, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now you can have a great evening.